इच्छिनेटुवंटी पाटलु ना जिवितमलो ईदिनालो नन्नैं एन्तहगानो बलपरुस्तो उच्चनै
The day I was born again, these songs has anchored me and has encouraged me greatly.
नैनु तिरिगि जन्मिंचिना दिनमनुंडी ई पाटलु नन्नैं एन्तहगानो प्रोत्साह परिचि, नन्नैं एन्तहगानो उच्चाह परुस्तुनै
And as I have seen you singing these songs passionately and wholeheartedly, full-throatedly
मीरु ई पाटनो प्रदेशपोरकांगा, मी गोंतेत्ती, एन्तो आशयतो पाडुतुनपुडु नै चुस्नपुडु
I realize how much you love the Lord.
मीरु प्रभुनै एन्तहगाना प्रेमिस्तुनारो, नैनु कुर्तुन्छ गलिनानु
Or in other words, I must tell, you know how much the Lord loves you.
मरोका माटला चेप्पालांटे, मीरु मी प्रभुनै एन्तहगाना प्रेमिस्तुनारो, मीके तेलसु
And this is our confidence we are declaring together loudly through our songs and praises.
मनायका स्तुतुला द्वारा, मनायका कीर्तनला द्वारा, ईटुवंटी विस्वासान्नी मनमो बैलुपरुस्तुनाम
As you were singing, I hope you are not tired.
मीरु पाडुतुनपुडु, नैनु अनुकुटुनारो, मीरु अलिसिपोलेदनी
There is one more song coming in my heart. Actually, I was juggling between two titles.
ई पाटा नैनु ईदी आलोचिस्तुनपुडु ना हुदेमलोनुंडी, मरोका पाट उस्तुन्दी नैनैमो रण्डु सीर्षिकलमीदा माट्लाडलानी कोरुतुना
Whether I should share something about the importance of gospel preaching
सुवार्तनु गुरिंचिनेटुवंटी, प्रामुख्यता गुरिंचि माट्लाडालना
or to encourage ourselves, all of us, by something very precious to mention about it.
आइथे, मनलु मनमै प्रोत्साह परिचि, उच्चाह परिचुकन्नट्लिगा प्रशेष्टमैना वाटिनी गुरिंचि माट्लाडालना, अनेव उद्देश्यमुतो उन्नन्न नैनु
And that is the kingdom of God.
अदैन्तांटे, देवुनी एक्का राज्यम
There is a wonderful powerful song in our hymn in this Sionic Gith. It is "Prabhu Tera Rajya Atal Hai Nahitale Sadha Rahega"
येका सियोनिगितालो अद्भुतमैना, शिक्तिवंतमैनट्वंटोका पाट अवुंदी अधि हिन्दीलो चब्तुनार बदरु, तेलुगुलो नाक राठ्लेदु
I don't know if anybody knows this. Prabhu Tera Rajya Atal Hai Nahitale Sadha Rahega I think in Telugu, it is there.
प्रबुराज्यमु निष्चलमैनदि
Would you please open your books to that song, please?
योरन अन सियोनिगितालुंडे दैछिन्स चूर्णडी
It talks about the kingdom of God.
ई पाटा देवुनी राज्यमु गुरिंचि माट्लाडतावुंदी
Kingdom of God cannot be shaken.
देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु
But there are few other things mentioned for our encouragement
मना प्रोत्साह कुरकै कुन्नी रायबढुतो उच्चनै
And we want to put some emphasis on those matters also.
आविष्यालमीदा, नैनु नक्की वक्काणिंछालानी कोरुतुनाम
It is mentioned, "Prabhu ka jan nahitalega, prabhu ka jan atal rahega"
देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु एप्पडिकी निष्चलमैनदि
Another place it is written, "Prabhu ka ghar nahitalega, prabhu ka ghar sadha rahega"
मरोका माट अन्रायबडिन्नटे, देवुनी एक्का नीति एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु
How many of you know this song? Please raise hand.
एन्तमंदिकी ई पाट तेलसंडी
Or the brothers who are helping us can come and lead us in that song. No?
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows. Oh, I think your assignment is to learn this song.
मनान्दरिकी इंटिपनेन्टांटे, ई पाटा इंटिकेल्लाकन नैर्चकोटाम
And remember it by heart.
इदी मनमो कंटापाटंगा पाडावल्सनेटुवंटी पाटा
Such an powerful encouragement we find in this song.
ई पाटलो मनमो अद्भुतमैनट्वंटी प्रोत्साहानी मनम चुस्ताम
Lord's servants who wrote all these anointed songs for our benefit
देवुनी सेवकलु, आत्मचेत अभिषेकिंचबड़ी मनायका प्रयोजनम कुरकै, मनायका क्षेमम कुरकै ई कीर्तनल रासरु
And especially when we sing these songs in a holy convocation, it adds even greater power and strength to it.
इदै पाटलु, परिषद समाजकुडिकलो पाडुतुनपुडु एन्तो गोप्पा प्रोत्साहम, एन्तो गोप्पा बलान्नी, पुंदिनट्लिगा मेम चुस्तुनाम
But in this song, it all starts with the kingdom of God.
येका पाटा प्रारम्भिंचनमै, देवुनी एक्का राज्यमुतो आरम्भिंचिनाडु
Yeah, "Prabhu ka jo rajya, prabhu tera rajya atal hai kabhi talay nahi, o talayga nahi"
प्रबुवा नी एक्का राज्य, प्रबुवा नी एक्का राज्यमु निष्चलमैनदि अधि एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु अन्रायबडिन्दी
It cannot be shaken.
अधि एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु
So this evening, we want to see the importance of the kingdom of God for each and every believers.
ई सायंकालम इकडु कुर्छिन्ना, मनान्दरी विस्वासले एक्का प्रयोजनम कुरकै देवुनी एक्का राज्यमने अम्शमीदा माट्लाडलानी कोरुतुनानु
We'll read some scripture portions and those scriptures will speak to us very loud and clear.
येका लेखनभागलानी मनम चालुतुनपुडु, स्पष्टंगा बिग्गरगामनम चदिनपुडु देवुड़ मनको अर्धमैटटुगा जेस्ताडु
First of all, let us turn to Gospel according to Mark, chapter 1, verses 14 and 15.
मट्टमधटिगा, मार्कु सुवार्ता वकटो अज्जयम, वकटो अज्जयम
14 and 15.
आ, पद्नालुगु, पद्नालुगो उच्चनम, पदिहैनो उच्चनम, चौतानंडी
Gospel according to Mark, chapter 1, verse 14 and 15.
मार्कु सुवार्ता वकटो अज्जयम, पद्नालुगु, पदिहैनो उच्चनालु
In Telugu, please.
तेलुगुलो नैनु चौतानंडी योहानु चरपट्टबडिना तर्वाता एसु, कालमु सम्पूर्णमैनदि देवुनी राज्यमु समीपिंचिनदि, मारुमनसु पोंदी सुवार्तन नम्बडानी चेप्पोचु देवुनी सुवार्ता प्रकटिंचिचु, गलिलयेको उच्चनो
So, at the outset of the ministry of Lord Jesus, he started talking about the kingdom of God.
एसु कृष्ट प्रभयेक्का परिचर्य आरंभमलोने, आयन देवुनी राज्यमनु गुरिंचि माट्लाडुनाडु
He said, "Repent, for the kingdom of God is near."
आयन अटुनाडु, मारुमनसु पोंदंडी, देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु समीपमुगाउनदि
We always do this, whatever is the most important matter we presented the first.
मनमो एदी एक्कोगा जेस्तुन्डमंडे, एदी प्रामुख्यमैन्दो, दान्ने मट्टमधटिगा मन चेलानुकुटाम
That when it is presented to some person, it may stay in the mind and it may stay in the heart.
अधि वेरेका व्यक्तुलुको मनम अन्दिंचिनपुडु, वारेक्का हुदेयालो, वारेक्का मनसलो अधि एल्लपुडु निलिचिवुन्नालाने उद्देश्यमुतो, मनम वाला कान्दिस्तुन्डम
Kingdom of God is very important to understand about.
देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु अर्धन जेस्कोडानिकी, अधि एन्तो प्रामुख्यमैनट्वंटी अम्शमुगाउनदि
Lord Jesus started talking to Nicodemus
एसु कृष्ट प्रभारु, निकोदेमुतो माट्लाटम आरम्भिंचिनपुडु
Gospel according to John, chapter 3, verse 3, let us read it.
योहान सुवार्ता मुड़ो अज्जयम, मुड़ो उच्चनम, दैछेसी चौतानंडी, योहान सुवार्ता
Chapter 3, verse 3.
मुड़ो उच्चनम
Telugu, please.
तेलुगुलो नैनु चौतानु, अन्दुकी एसु अतनितो, वकटु क्रत्तगा जन्मिंचितेने कानि अतरु देवुनी राज्यमनु चुडलेदनी, नीतो निष्चयमुगाच चेप्पोचुन्नान अन्न नैनु
Lord is telling to this deaconess that you must be born again. If you won't be born again, you cannot see the kingdom of God.
एसु कृष्ट प्रभारु, निकोदेमुतो माट्लाडुतु, नीवो तिरिगि जन्मिस्तेने कानि देवुनी राज्यमनु चुडनेरबु, अनेव चब्तुनाडु
He says, "Verily, verily, I tell you."
आयन अटुनाडु, निष्चयमुगा, निष्चयमुगा, अटुनाडायन
Unless a man be born again.
ओका व्यक्ति तिरिगि जन्मिंचिते तप्पा
I hope you all are born again, believers.
इकडुन्ना वाल्ल अन्दरु, विस्वासलु, तिरिगि जन्मिंचिनारनी नैनु अनुकुटुनानु
If any one of you is not yet born again or any one of you have not received the Lord Jesus in your life
इन्कायोरैना एसु कृष्ट प्रभुनु मी एक्का जिवितालुनिकी अंगिकरिंचकपोते इन्कायोरैना तिरिगि जन्मिंचकपोते
You should pay even extra attention to what I'm talking about.
दैछेसी मीरु मी एक्का गमनानी कुच्चमेक्कोगा, ई विषयम वायपु अन्न चब्तुनेटुवंटी माटलावायपु, गमनानी, मी गमनानी तिर्पालानी कोरुतुनानु
And this John, chapter 3, verse 3 is in red letters in my Bible.
अन्नका चौतानेटुवंटी बाइबिललो, एरुपुरंगु अक्षरालतो, येका माटलु रायबढाय
Whenever it is in red letters, those words are spoken by our Lord himself.
बाइबिल ग्रंधमलो, एप्पुडैना मनमो एरुपुरंगलोनट्वंटी वच्चनालु चौतानपुडु अभि एसु कृष्ट प्रभारीका नोटलोनु उच्चनेटुवंटी माटलानी मन ग्रहिंछाली
And that is why I think someone came up with this idea to have all these Lord-spoken words in red letters.
अन्दुके योरुको ई आलोचिन तट्टिन्दी, एसु प्रभारु माट्लाडिना प्रतिमाटनो एरुपुरंगु अक्षरालतो वाक्याल रायबढाय
One should not absolutely ignore any of the words written in the Bible.
ई बाइबिललोनट्वंटी, ए वच्चनानी गुडा मनमो, विस्मरिंचितानिकी, विच्चपेडानिकी लेदुगानि
But one must pay extra attention to the words spoken by the Lord himself.
आइथे, एसु कृष्ट प्रभारु ताने, पलिकिनेटुवंटी, आ वच्चनालमीदा मनम एक्को वायनेटुवंटी, आलोचिनानु, मनकेन्द, मन गमनानी केन्द्रिगरिंछालानी प्रभु कोर्तान
Nicodemus was a teacher, he was a well-known person.
निकोदेमु वायनेटुवंटी, आयन ओका बोधकुडु, आयन एन्तो पेरुगाँचिनेटुवंटी व्यक्ति
And he was afraid of other people, so he came to meet the Lord at nighttime.
आयन रात्रिपुटे एसु प्रभुनु कल्स्कोडानिकी उच्चड एन्दुकांटे, वेरेवाल्ल योरन चुस्तारैमननट्वंटी, भयमतो एसु प्रभुनु कलवडानिकी रात्री समयमलो उच्चड
For any reason, we can come to the Lord at any time, I must tell you.
आ, मेम चेप्पे दैन्तांटे, ए कारणम कुरकैना नु एसु कृष्ट प्रभुनु कलवडानिकी, ए समयमलैना नु समीपिंचच्चु
So Lord is telling him, "Verily, verily, I tell you, Nicodemus, unless a man be born again, he cannot see the kingdom of God."
निकोदेमुतो आयन चेप्पुनेटुवंटी माटा, निष्चयमुगा, निष्चयमुगा नैनु नीतो चेप्पुन्ना माट एन्टा तेलसा, निकोदेमु नीवो क्रत्तगा जन्मिंचितेने कानि, देवुनी राज्यमनु चुडलेवानी चब्तुनान
Forget about entering into the kingdom of God, but one cannot even see from far off the kingdom of God.
देवुनी राज्यमलोनिकी प्रवेशिंचिताने विषयानी नु मर्चिपो असल देवुनी राज्यानी नु चुडालांटेने, नु तिरिगि जन्मिंछाली
Because the kingdom of God has utmost importance for all mankind.
मानवजातिक अन्ततिकी, देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु, अति प्रामुख्यमैनट्वंटी अम्शमु
There was a big election going on in USA
आ, अमेरिका समिक्त राष्ट्रालो, ओका पेद्दा एनिकल जरुगुतुनै
And this election was so crucial that all the hearts and minds and eyes were focused throughout the world on this election.
ई एनिकलु एन्त प्रामुख्यमैनमंडे, प्रपंचमलोनट्वंटी, प्रतियक्रयेक्का मनसु, वारेक्का हुदेयमु ई एनिकलमीदने केन्द्रिगरिंचिनारु
People were waiting to know who is going to rule this great country, America.
अमेरिकाने एटुवंटी गोप्पा राज्यानी, योवरु परिपालिंचबोतुनारो अनेव दैटुवंटी गोप्पा आशयतो, प्रपंचलोनट्वंटी, प्रजल अंदरिदुर जुस्तुनारु
There is some lies or misunderstanding prevailing in the midst of many, many believers, mainly in India, it may be other countries also.
मना भारदेसमलोनट्वंटी, अनेक देशालोनट्वंटी, विस्वासलो, मेदुलुतुनट्वंटी ओका अपद्धमु निजमुगानेटुवंटी संगत दैन्तांटे
That America has gone down and there is no moral ethics there and nobody cares for gospel and not many Christians or not many real believers there.
नाइ, अमेरिका नाइतिकंगा पडिपैन्दी, ना नाइतिकेवेलुवालानी पैनाई क्राइस्ट अवत्वमु, देवुनी गुरिंचिनेटुवंटी माटलु, योवरु पट्टिचुकुनेवाल्ल लेरु सुवार्ता प्रकटिंचबड़लेदु, अनेव अम्शालु गुरिंचि मनम माट्लाडतुन्डम
But matter of fact is this, and this is the truth, that more believers, forward believers, powerful mighty believers are there in USA than any other country in the world.
आइथे, निजानिकी वास्तवमैन्टांटे, देवुनी कुरकु रोशंगलिगी एन्तो शिक्तिवंतंगा पनिजेसिटेटुवंटी, विस्वासलु, सुवार्तिकुलु अमेरिकालो उन्नारु
In 19th sanctuary and as well as in 20th sanctuary, America has sent hundreds of thousands of missionaries throughout all the countries in the world.
प्रपंचदेशालन्यट्लोनिकी, अमेरिका देशमनुंडी पद्धमदो सदाव्यम इरवैय सदाव्यमलो, वंदलकुलेदिगा, वेलकुलेदिगा, मिशनेरीलु पंपिंचबड़दारु
Because people don't know much about the Lord's ways and Lord's plans and purposes he has for America.
अमेरिका विषयमलो, देवुड़ कलिगिनेटुवंटी मार्गालु, आयन एक्का प्रणालिकलु चाला मंदिकी तिलियनी वार्गाउन्नारु
My uncle-in-law, brother Noel Justine, wanted to give his ministry in our hands, me and my wife's hands, many years back.
चाला समस्त सालकृतम, अन्नावाल्ल मामा, आयन तन्न परिचर्येनु अन्नकु तर्वाता अक्ककु अपगिच्छालानी कोरुनाडु
And he don't wanted us to go to USA and settle down there.
मेमो अमेरिका केली, अकडै स्थिरपडालानी, अन्न एमात्रम कोरुकोलेदु
And so he used to tell, "You may be a prime minister of India or president of America, there is no greater privilege than to serve the Lord."
आ, नु वकवेला, भारदेसप्रधानिवैना, अमेरिका देसप्रधानिवैना अधि मुख्यमैन्दीगादु, देवुनी एक्का सेवा, देवुनी एक्का सुवार्ते प्रामुख्यमैन्दन्तु चब्तु उच्चड
But Lord had a different plan for our lives. Mainly because he had a different mindset or understanding about America, he never wanted us to go and settle down there.
आ, मालोनेटुवंटी, येका मनसिकमैनेटुवंटी स्थिति गतलनुपट्टी मेम अकडै केली, स्थिरपडालाना उद्देश्यमुतो, मेम अकडै केल्लेक्पैनाम
Consider America as a kingdom.
ओकवेला, अमेरिकानो, ओका राज्यम्गा मनम परिगणिस्ते
America has the most powerful army, navy and air force.
आ, अमेरिका देशमलोनट्वंटी सायन्यमु, नवकादलमु, वायुदलमु अन्प्रपंचदेशालन्यट्लोकांटे गुडा, शिक्तिवंतमैनमी
And despite of all other countries are claiming their superiority, but they are all wrong.
आ, वेरेदेशालन्य, चाला आदेशालन्यवाले एमन कुट्नारांटे माके एक्को शिक्तिवुंदी, अमेरिकाकांटे एक्को शिक्तिवुंदी अनुकुट्नार गाने, अधि वास्तवम्गादु
Greatest democracy.
अधि ओका पेद्ददैनेटुवंटी प्रजास्वाम्यम अधि
Richest country.
अधि आयश्वर्यमैनमैनट्वंटी देसम
And that is why, from all over the world, people are desiring or dreaming or trying to go and settle down in USA.
अन्दुवाल्लेन, प्रपंचमलोनट्वंटी, प्रतिमानवडु, ना देसमु गुरिंचि आशिस्तु अकडिकेबै स्थिरपडालानी कलालुगंटु उन्तारु
Since many years, we are US citizens
चाला समस्त सालन्चिगा, मेमो अमेरिका पौरसत्तमलो उन्नाम
And we have some extra privileges in our life because having US passport.
माको, अमेरिकाको सम्मानिचनेटुवंटी पासपोर्टुन्दि कानुका, माको अधनपु आधिक्यतलन्नी गुडा माकियोपटाय
We can go without visa in many, many countries.
चाला देशालकु मेमो वीसा लेकुन्ना गुडा वेल्लगलम
But that is not it. But if something happens as we are in India and something happens, somebody may attack us or put us in prison and like that, US government will do his level best to rescue us. He can send Navy SEAL, the most powerful force in the world, to rescue us from any situation.
आ, वकवेला, मेमो इंडिया कोचिन तर्वाता, ममले योरन दाडीजेसी ममलो गोवेला जैललो बिड्ते, अमेरिका देगरुनेटुवंटी, नवकादलम एन्त शिक्तिवंतमैन्दन्ते वाल्ल ए टाइमलैना, एप्पुडैना उच्चि ममलो रक्षिंचगलिनेटुवंटी, शिक्ति वाल्लकुंदि
The country is committed to do anything and everything for his citizens.
आ पौर, अमेरिकालोनट्वंटी, पौरलकुरकै, आ देसमु एन्त कट्टुबडिउन्दन्ते, वाल्लकुरकु एन्त वरकैना उस्तुन्दी
Why I am bragging about USA and the government of USA?
एन्दुकु नैनु अमेरिका देसम गुरिंचि, अमेरिका प्रभुतम गुरिंचि इन्तहगाना चब्तुनानु
Because many, many and even the believers are attracted and I may say they are carried away by seeing all these privileges the US citizens are having.
आ, वाल्लु इकडुनट्वंटी विस्वासलुगानि, प्रपंचलोनट्वंटी, प्रतियक्रय अमेरिका देसमलोनट्वंटी, अनेकमैना आधिक्यतलु जुसी वाल्ल एन्नोसारलु, मेम गुड अकडै केल्ते बाउन्टुंदी, स्थिरपडते बाउन्टुंदी अनुकुट्नारु
But I must tell you, take off your eyes, your attention from America.
नैनु चेप्पे दैन्तांटे, मी कन्नुलु, अमेरिका मीदनुंडी तिर्पालिपुडु
Fix your eyes on the kingdom of God.
पुडु मनायका कन्नुलु, मन नेत्रालु, देवुनी राज्यमीदिकी मनम तिर्पाली
Only kingdom of God cannot be shaken.
देवुनी एक्का राज्यमुक्कटे, एन्नटिकी कदल्छबड़दु
Kingdom of God cannot be moved.
देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी, योवरु कदल्छलेरु
And whenever the kingdom is mentioned, the king must be remembered.
आ, देवुनी राज्यमु गुरिंचि मनम माट्लाडुनपुडु, राजुनु ज्ञापकन जेस्कोवाली
Who is this king of this kingdom of God?
ई देवुनी राज्यानी कुन्नेटुवंटी, ई राज योवरु
Nothing other than our king of kings and the lord of lords, our Lord Jesus Christ.
आयन एवरोगादु, राजुलकु राजु, प्रभुलकु प्रभयेनेटुवंटी, मनम प्रभयने एसु कृष्ट वारे
He is always God.
आयन सर्वग्नानी
He is all-knowing God.
आयन सर्वमेरिगिनेटुवंटी वाडु
Omnipresent, omnipotent God.
आयन सर्वांतर्यामी, सर्वशिक्तिमंतुडायन
Nothing is hidden from him.
आयन नुंडी, ए सृष्टमु दागि उन्डलेदु
He knows the end from the beginning.
आयन आरंभमनुंडे, अंतानेरिगिनेटुवंटी देवुड
Such a lord is the king of this kingdom.
अटुवंटी राजु, येका राज्यानीकी राजुगाउनाडु
America has this mightiest army.
अमेरिकाको वकवेला, शिक्तिवंतमैनट्वंटी सायन्यमुन्दैमो
Has powerful and latest weapons.
एन्नो, मरी शिक्तिवंतमैनट्वंटी, अत्याधिनकुमैनेटुवंटी, वाल्ल देगर आयदालुन्नायमो
But the kingdom of God has the most powerful force in the universe.
येका प्रपंचमंतत्लो, विश्वमंतत्लो, देवुनी एक्का राज्यमलो, अत्यंत शिक्तिवंतमैनट्वंटी सायन्यमुन्दि
Brother Baxing used to call this army holy angels, mighty angels and many angels.
बक्सिंगारु, येका सायन्यन एमनेवाडांटे, परिषदमैनट्वंटी दूतलु
And the Lord has
शिक्तिवंतमैनट्वंटी दूतलु, महा दूतलानी पिल्चेवाडु
And the Lord has given us the angel to keep an eye on us and protect us.
अटुवंटी देव दूतलनु, मनको, मनमीदा कापलागावलन पेट्याडु
He will charge his angel or angels to watch over us.
मनलु कापाड्डानिकी, आयन दूतलनु कावलिंचिनाडु
And that is why the devil tried to tempt Lord Jesus, that he will send his angel that you may not dash your feet.
अन्दुके अटुनाडु अप्पवादी, नी कालिकी, नी पादमनकु राय तगलकुंडा आयन दूतलकु नु अग्नपिंचु, अनेव एसु प्रभुने शोधिस्तुनाडु
One angel can destroy hundred and thirty-five thousand people or the big army.
आ, आयका वक्का दूता, लक्षा मूप्पायाईदु वेलमंदिने समरिंचगलदु
Such an awesome army our kingdom has.
आ राज्यमलोनट्वंटी, आ सायन्यानी कुन्नेटुवंटी, आका दूतलकुन्नेटुवंटी शिक्ति अंत गोप्पदि
And when the Lord was on the cross, he says, "If I can ask, my father will send legions of multitude of angels to rescue me."
एसु कृष्ट प्रभारु सिलोमे वृहलाडुनपुडु, नैनु इपुडु नातंडिने, नैनु प्रार्धन जेस्ते आयन सायन्य समूहानी नाकुरकु पंपिंचडा, अटुनाडायन
Whenever there was urgency, whenever there was very important matter, our Lord, the king of the kingdom ends up sending his angels to visit the mankind.
एप्पुडैना, मन जिवितालो, एसु कृष्ट प्रभारीकी, अत्यवसरमैनट्वंटी परिस्थिति उच्चिनांटे आ दूतलनु मन एद्दकु पंपिस्ताडु
People are crazy about the precious metal, the gold.
चाला मंदिक, प्रजल अंदरुगुडा, अत्यंत विल्वैना, बंगारमकोसमु पर्गलेडुनारु
In the kingdom of God, all the streets are made out of pure gold.
देवुनी राज्यमलो, आयका राज विदुलन्नी गुडा, बंगारतो चेवडाय
If any one of you or any one of us, they are fond of gold, then your eyes should be on that kingdom.
योरुकैना इकड़ा बंगारमीदा आशय उद्दी अंटे, मन कन्नुलन्नी गुडा, परलोका राज्य देवुनी राज्यावायपे उन्डाली
Everything is in plenty there.
अकडुन्न, अकडुनट्वंटी, प्रतिदिगुडा, समृद्धितो उद्दी अकड़ा
There we will not need the sun, this people are worshiping the sun in the early morning.
इपुडु ई लोकमलो, उदयकालाने लेचि, चाला मंदिक, नमस्कारं जेस्तुनट्वंटी, सूरिनी मनम अकड़ा कल्स्कोले
There won't be any more night there in that kingdom.
आयका राज्यमलो, रात्रनैदेलेदु
Yeah, "Haluwan vahadhyahay" means our Lord Jesus is the lamp of that kingdom and the light of that kingdom.
आयका राज्यानीकी, दीपमु आयने, खान्ती आयने
There is a wonderful song in Gujarati in our mother tongue.
आ, अन्नावाल्ल मातुर्भाषिनेटुवंटी, गुजरातीलो ओका अद्भुतमैना पाट अवुंदी
Yeah, so this is in nutshell, I want to just to catch your attention I am mentioning about and comparing. There is no comparison between earthly kingdoms, any kingdom, and our Lord's kingdom, the heavenly kingdom.
नैनु कुल्पतंगा मीको, देवुनी एक्का राज्यमु गुरिंचि मीतो माट्लाडायनु गुलोकमलोनट्वंटी राज्यलगानि, देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी, राज्यानीकी, ईटुवंटी पोलिकलु, ईटुवंटी वेदालु मनम चुडलेम
And to put even greater emphasis on the kingdom of heaven or kingdom of God in Matthew, there is found very powerful scripture portion.
इन्का मनमो देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी गुरिंचि, अत्यधिकमैनमैनम तेलस्कोवालांटे मत्तै सुवार्ता पद्मुड़ो अज्जयमलो, देवुनी राज्यमु गुरिंचिनेटुवंटी वाक्याल अकडुन्नाय
Would you please turn with me to Matthew, Gospel according to Matthew, chapter 6 and verse 33.
आ, मत्तै सुवार्ता आरो अज्जयम, मूप्पायमुड़ो उच्चनम, दैछेसंदरं चौद्दम, मत्तै सुवार्ता आरु मूप्पायमुडु
Matthew, chapter 6, verse 33 reads, "But seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness and all other things will be added unto you."
काबट्टी मीरु आयन राज्यमनु नीतिनी मोदता वेदकुडी, अपुड़ा वन्नीयु मी कनुग्रहिपबडुनो
It is mentioned, Lord says, "Seek and you shall find."
इकड़ा रायबनेटुवंटी माट एन्तांटे, वेदकुडी मीको दरकुनो
We need to seek the kingdom of God.
मनमो देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी वेदकाली
There are many facets or aspects in this matter of kingdom of God.
देवुनी एक्का राज्यमनु गुरिंचि, अनेकमैनेटुवंटी कोनालु, अनेकमैनेटुवंटी मुखालु नैदानिकी
Don't seek the riches, don't seek the name or fame in this world, but seek ye first and foremost the kingdom of God.
येका लोकमलोनट्वंटी, पेरु प्रक्षातलु, येका आयश्वर्यानी गुरिंचि कादुगानि देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी, आयन नीतिनी मोदता वेदकाली
Part of my testimony is this matter that I was craving or I was very happy for the name and fame I was receiving.
अन्न तन्न साक्षानी कुल्पतंगा, पांछुकुनेटुवंटी, ई भागमलो, चब्तुनेटुवंटी माट एन्तांटे येका लोकमलोनट्वंटी, आयश्वर्यमु, आस्तुलु, वाटिमीदा, अन्न एन्तो आशयगलिगुंडे वाडु
I was professor in college.
अन्न ओका कॉलेजलो प्रोफेसर गाउनाडु
And I was a chairman of many different committees in the college.
आयका कॉलेजलोनट्वंटी, अनेकमैनेटुवंटी कमिटीस्की, अन्न चेयरमैन गुनारु
It was a big college.
अदोका पेद्दा कॉलेज
Though I have served in five notorious colleges.
अन्न अप्पटिके, ऐदु प्रक्षातिगाँचिनेटुवंटी, कॉलेजलो प्रोफेसरका पांझेसरु
But the last one was having three faculties, arts, science and commerce. So it's a huge number of students were there.
तन चिवरिगा पनिजेसिनेटुवंटी, आ कॉलेजलो, आर्ट्स, साइंस, तर्वाता कामर्सनी, मूड़ भागलकु पेद्दा कॉलेज कुंडेदि
Sorry, sorry brother. I was doing many, many extra co-curriculum activities.
अन्न इवेगा कुंडा, प्रचेकमैनेटुवंटी, मरी कल्चरल एक्टिविटीस एन्नो जेस्तु उच्चनारु
And what I am talking to you about is before my salvation.
ईवन्नी नैनु एप्पुडु तरिगिनावानी चब्तुनानुंडे, नैनु रक्षन पोंदकमुरुपु तरिगिनेटुवंटी विषयलिव
No wonder a name and fame was my life.
अन्न येका जिवितमलो, पेरु प्रक्षातलु पोंदरमै, तन जिविता लक्षंगा उन्डु उच्चनाडु
My name used to come in the newspaper every week.
प्रति वारमु, अन्न पेरु वार्तापत्रिकलो उच्चड
And that newspaper had big circulation and I was so happy to know that my in-laws are reading about my achievements and my greatness.
आयका वार्तापत्रिकलनी, चाला मंदिक चदिविन तर्वाता, मामा गारु नैन एन्त गोप्पा विजयालानी सादिस्तुनाडु, तेलस्कुने आनंदिस्तुन्डा, नैनु नैनु गुड़ आनंदिच्छे वाडनी
And so my eyes were blinded by all these matters of the world.
ई लोकसम्मानमैनेटुवंटी विषयालतो, नायका नेत्रालु मुयबढाय
But the scripture is reminding us, who are the believers who have trusted the Lord as their own personal Savior, "Seek ye first the kingdom of God."
विस्वासलम्गा, एसु कृष्ट प्रभय करक्तमलो कड़गुबन्ने वारम्गा मनम चेल्सनेटुवंटी, प्रामुख्यमैनेटुवंटी संगत दैन्तांटे, देवुनी एक्का राज्यानी मोदता वेदकाली
And his righteousness.
आयन नीतिनी वेदकाली
Kingdom's righteousness and the king's righteousness.
देवुनी राज्यमयक्का नीति, राजयक्का नीति, रण्डु वेदकाली
Basically, we all, even though we are believers, we are self-righteous people.
प्राधमिकंगा मनम चुस्ते, मनम विस्वासले एन्पटिकी, मनको स्वनीतनेदुंदि
Ourself is always on the throne.
मनायका अहम, एप्पुडु सिमहासनमीदा कुर्छने एल्टोउंडुंदि
Self-righteous people are self-centered people.
स्वनीतिगलिनेटुवंटी प्रजलु, स्वार्थमुदो कुडिनेटुवंटी प्रजलु
They don't seek or look after anyone else.
वारु वेरे, योवरिनी चुड्डानिकी स्टप्पड़दु
First priority is themselves.
मट्टमधटी प्राधान्यता वाल्ल जिवितमलो योरुकांटे, वारीके
They want, they want to see themselves high and lifted up.
वारु मात्रमै, उन्नत स्थानमलो, अन्दरिकी कनवडालानी कोरुतु उन्तारु
Long time back, the Lord was speaking to my wife regarding this Long time back, the Lord was speaking to my wife regarding this righteousness.
Ah, annavalla, satimanito, chala kalankradata, eeaka devuni raajamu, aina neethi gurichchi maatladu.
In one fellowship, a brother was preaching the whole message or giving the whole message about the righteousness.
Aayaka bodinchinatuvanti aasohadaradu, aavartamana anta gudda, devuni raajam, aina neethi gurichchi maatladu ochinadu.
And the Lord revealed this to my wife, which is so precious.
Adi, annavalla, satimaniki ento preciousthamayindaga unundhi.
Lord said, to own his righteousness, we must let go our own righteousness.
Aina eeaka neethini manamu pondadani ke, manayaaka neethini manamu vismarinchali.
Yes, our Lord has clothed us with the robe of his righteousness.
Avnu mana prabhu, tanaa neethi ane, payvastramudo mana landarani dhrimpa jesnaadu.
But in our lives as believers, we don't see any reality about having this robe of righteousness, we manifest and exhibit our or show forth our own righteousness here and there everywhere.
Chala saalu, appudu appudu, akkada akkada, kevalamo, mana neethini maatrame, prasurinchevaranga, kanavarsukune varanga untaam.
Our own righteousness brings self-righteousness and ugliness.
Mana eeaka neethi, mana swanithi, atyanta vikaramayatuvanti.
We want to see ourselves more righteous than the next person, any other person.
Ah, mana prakkanaguchinavari kante, mana chuttuvanavari kandarikante, neene, neethi mantuladu, ananukundu untaam.
Even husband and wife, they will have this kind of race or this kind of attitude to present herself or himself more righteous than the other party.
Bharebaratala maddele gudda, ituvanti potti jarugutune unundhi, bhare kante barta, barta kante bhare, neethi mantuga kanavadaalani potti vadutu untaru.
And that is why in all the aspects of our Christian life, our practical Christian life, we must seek his kingdom's righteousness and the king's righteousness first.
Christavalamga, mana jivitalo, anekamayana vishyalo, anekamayana rangalo, kevalamo, mana neethini kadu, devuni raajamyaka neethini, aa rajuaka neethini, manam vedakutu unnaali.
At least last part should catch your attention or our attention, which tells, and all the things will be added unto you or given unto you.
Kanisam, ee chivari, vaakyalo, chivaraasatuvanti maata, andarini akarshisindanukuntano, appudu avanniyuumi ku anugrahimpabaduno nee maata.
So, there are many benefits of seeking him and his righteousness in our life on daily basis or hourly basis.
Manamu dina dina mo, manamu pratiganta, mari devuni eka raaja ni vedakutu ute, devudu mana jivitalo kaligiche, anekamayana proyojnalu, manam gavanechala ni kauruthunam.
So, about the kingdom of God, this scripture is very important.
Eeaka devuni raajamnu gurichchi manam chudali ante, devuni eka vaake bhagamo ento pramukhyamayedigama manam chustanam ikada.
Let us turn to one more scripture portion found in Epistle of Paul to Romans.
Romelikrasina pathrika, mana maruka lekana bhagana mana chodani prayatan jestam, roma pathrika.
Romans, chapter fourteen, verse seventeen.
Padnaluvaavachayam, roma pathrika, padnaluvaavachayam, padhihedavachinam.
The kingdom of God is not meat and drink, but righteousness, peace and joy in the Holy Spirit.
Devuni raajamu, bhoganamu, panaamu kadu gani, neethiyu samaadhanaamu, parishuddhatmayandali, anandamu naayunnadi.
Many, many believers are fond of eating and drinking.
Chalamandi visvasalaku, tinatamu, tragatamante, chala istam.
That is why there is very powerful scripture portion, Lord gave it to or presented before me many years back, that Lord is going to destroy both food and the belly.
Aduvalne, chala samasala gritam, devudu naaku anugrahinchinatuvanti vaka vaake bhagam entante, eeaka, tini trage, aayaka rajalani devudu naashananjastunadu.
Yes, so kingdom of God is not eating and drinking.
Devuni eka raajamu, bhoganamu, panaamu kadu.
But what it is, let us read it together.
Aita entadi, andaran kalisadavadi prayatan jestam.
Let us read this seventeenth verse together, Romans fourteen seventeen.
Andaran kalisi, roma pathrika, padnaluvaavachayam, padhihedavachinam, kalisavatamandi, devuni raajam, bhoganamu, panaamu kadu gani, neethiyu samaadhanaamu, parishuddhatmayandali, anandamu naayunnadi.
Righteousness.
Neethi.
Then what is it?
Tarvate mundhi?
Yes, and what is the third matter?
Mudaventhi?
Joy in the Holy Spirit.
Parishuddhatmayandali, anandamu.
Yeah, so, there is a song, very powerful, very well-known known song about this righteousness, peace and the joy in the Holy Ghost, that's the kingdom of God.
Devuniraajam lo netuvanti, eeaka neethi samaadhanaamu, parishuddhatmayandali, anandamu nee, ee mood vishyalo gurichchi vaka, gopa, vaka adbutamayatuvanti parta undhi.
Want to be a part of this kingdom.
Neevu eeaka raajamlo, paali bhagastadu vaka vali ante.
Lord has given us the part in this kingdom, but in reality, or we don't see this reality lived out in our Christian life.
Devudu eeaka raajamlo, manam gudda paalu pondalani devudu anugrahinchinadu gani, kani vastavaniki mana jivitalo, dini kriyapurakanga anubhavichaleka potunam.
We think this world is the kingdom.
Manam anukundunamo, eeaka lokame, aayaka raajam anukundunam.
But this worldly kingdom, the prince of this kingdom is Satan.
Eeaka lokaraja nikki, adipati evru ante, satanu.
And so, we should not be at enmity with God loving this world.
Eeaka lokani preminchi, devuni ki manamu virodelamu kakunda undhumgaka.
Friendship with the world is enmity with God.
Lokamuto snehamo, devuni to vairamo.
So this earthly kingdom, we must take off our eyes and fix our eyes on the King and the kingdom of God.
Eeaka lokasambandamayatuvanti raajam edunatuvanti mana kanulano, tolagajesi, devuni raajamunu aina neethini, aina eka raaja meda mana kanulano manam kendri karinchali.
Righteousness, our King is a righteous King.
Mana eeaka raaju, neethigaliginatuvanti raaju.
And says, seek the peace, the second matter is peace, our Lord is the prince of peace.
Rendava vishemo, manamu vedakalsatuvanti vishemo entante samaadhanaamu, mana raaju, aina samaadhana puraju.
In Spanish language, it is said, principa de paz, prince of peace.
Eeaka Spanish language lo, yamantaranante, principa de paz.
Yes, and so, we must seek the peace and the prince of peace.
Manamu eeaka samaadhana ni vedakali, samaadhana puraju vedakali.
And joy in the Holy Spirit.
Parishuddhatmayandali, anandam.
There should not be any other matter we may take pleasure in it.
Manamu anandil chalsinatuvanti vishyal, inkayevi mana jivitalo unnakududu.
We must be captured and we must be consumed by this matter, how great, how mighty, how loving, how convicting is the Spirit of God.
Devuni eka parishuddhatma devuni eka, aina anugrahinchche anandamu, enta vappinchadigindo, enta gopado, daani chetha maatrame manamu cherrapatabadali.
Let us turn to one more scripture portion.
Maruka lekana bhagana chustamandi.
This is all because Lord wants to mention to us, each and every one of us, the importance of the kingdom of God.
Yevannini, deni chaptunamante, devuni raajamyaka pramukhyatano, neevu neevu, tilskovalani, devudu kaurata unnadu.
Turn with me to Gospel According to Mark.
Markusuvartha.
Gospel According to Mark, chapter nine, verse forty-seven.
Tommydavachayam, nalavayedavachinam, markusuvartha, tumidi, nalavayedandi.
Mark, chapter nine, verse forty-seven in Telugu, please.
Nalavayedavachinam, Telugu lo chavutunano, nee kanunu, abhyanthara parichneedala, daani teesi paraveyam, rundo kanulu galiginarakamalo padavayebadutakante, vanti kanu galavadavay, devuni raajamlo pravesinchitam meelu.
How sobering is this scripture portion.
Eeaka lekana bhagamo, entaga manalni, nana mantulaga jastundhi.
If your eye becomes a hindrance or obstacle or hurdle to enter into the kingdom of God, we must be willing and more than willing to pluck out our eye.
Mana eeaka kanu, devuni raajamlo pravesinchakunda, abhyantharamo, aatankamo, addu bandaga ute, mana kanunu teesi paraveyam antunadu.
It is better, the scripture tells us, it is far better that you may lose one eye but have access and have entrance in the kingdom of God.
Rundo kanulu galiginarakamalo padavayebadutakante, vanti kanu galavadavay, devuni raajamlo, samrudhiga pravesinchitam meelu gada antunadu.
That we may have access, that we can enter into the kingdom of God, the King has loved us so much that he has laid down his life for us.
Eeaka devuni raajamlo pravesinchche, manamu gavanechalsina sangat entante, eeaka raaju, devuni raaja nikiraja netuvanti prabhu, mana korakai, tanu taney, tanapranani arpinchinalu.
How high and lofty plan and purpose our Lord has for each and every one of us.
Karkurchna mana andareedala, devudu kaliginatuvanti, unnatamayana, etayatuvanti pranalikalu, enno unai.
You know, it is mentioned in one of the scriptures that how you can escape if you neglect so great a salvation.
Ah, vaka lekana bhagana manam chusinatleide, inta gopa rakshana nu, miru nirlakshamu chesneedala, yelagu tappinchukunduru, anraybadhi.
Very sobering scripture portion.
Aayaka lekana bhagalo, ati srestamayatuvanti maatalakara raaybadai.
Before our salvation, we should not ignore so great a salvation.
Manamu rakshana pondakamuru pu, mana eeaka rakshana nu, manam thunikarinchaledu.
But even after being born again or being saved, scripture tells, hold fast your salvation with fear and trembling.
Aita rakshana pondina taravata, antunadu, nee eeaka rakshana nu, bhayamuto, vanukuto, konasagimpa chesukunudi antunadu.
There is a song in Sionki, it says, parvatki choti se uncha mahan, mahan udhara jo hai, that is a very wonderful song.
Bla, paatal bustakalu vaka, indhi parta undhi, anna adhe chaptunadu.
Yeah, ordinary, this is not an ordinary salvation.
Idi saadharnamayatuvanti, samaynamayatuvanti rakshana kadu.
Scripture tells so great a salvation.
Lekana bhagam chaptundante, inta gopa rakshana.
To give us that so great of salvation needed so great a love of Lord Jesus.
Anta gopa rakshana ivadaniki, yesu Kristu Prabhu, ento gopa premanu mana edala chupinchalsochidi.
If you know John three sixteen, recite with me.
Ah, okavela neeku Johann Suvartha mudupadaharu tilsinatide, naathopatu palakalanikauruthunam.
In your own language, for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life.
Devudu lokamun ento premincheno, kaga aina tanadhitya kumaruniga puttina varinda visvasamunchu prati varadu.
This is John three sixteen.
Idi Johann Suvartha mudupadaharu.
For God so loved the world.
Devudu lokani ento premincheno.
To accomplish or to give us that so great a salvation needed so great a love of the Lord.
Mana ka gopa rakshana ni vadani ke, devudu a gopa premanu, mana edala chupinchinadu.
So, salvation gives us grace and privilege to enter into this kingdom of the King.
Eeaka rakshana nee, mana ku, aayaka paraloka, devuni raajamlo pravesinchitani ke, mana ku krupano, mana ku adikyatanu, anugrahinchedi gaundhi.
And so, anything and everything which may hinder us, stop us or become sidetracked to us, we must put it aside and try and strive to enter into the kingdom of God.
Manalu abhyanthara pariche, aatanka pariche, manalni margavunuchitrova tappinche, edaina, yavvaraina, vata ninitni manamu prakkanavetala antunadu.
One more scripture which is found in Mark, let us turn to Gospel According to Mark, chapter ten.
Maruka lekana bhagana, markusuvartha padavachayala manam chustam, markusuvartha padavachayam.
Mark, chapter ten and verse twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five, three verses.
Markusuvartha padavachayam, yaravaymudu, yaravaynalugu, yaravayedu vachinalandi, Telugu lo unnae chavatan, appudu yesu chuttu chuchi, astigalavaru devuni raajamlo pravesinchitai ento durlobhamani, tanasi shula to cheppe. Aina maatalaku, shishulu vismayamundari, andu ke yesu tirigivarito itlanenu, pillalara, tam asti enda namikainchuvaru, devuni raajamlo pravesinchitai ento durlobhamo.
This is also like, can wake us up from our sleep and slumber.
Ee maatalu gudda, nidrabothunatuvanti manalni, vaka saariga nidrovanandi, meelukalpe vedangava unnae.
And the Lord is telling this, that it's easy for a camel, you know, a big camel, last year, we went to few places in Middle East for ministry.
Eeaka majadara pranthamlo netuvanti, konni pranthalaku, anna pariseranimitum ellaru.
Almost one and a half month.
Ah, vaktinara nela, kuruunaru.
And then someone was teasing those Arabs.
Aayaka arabul gurichchi, yavro itla, valanu tirutunaru.
Now, they are driving Rolls Royce and Lamborghini and all this very, very expensive car because they have a lot of money coming from the oil.
Eeaka petrol baula dagarunnaiganuka, chala dabul unnaiganuka, vali budha atyanta kari, ka, kari galiginatuvanti karlu, Rolls Royce ani, MG ani, rakrakala karla vali nandutunaru.
But when they will run out of their oil, they will name their camels Lamborghini and Rolls Royce and, I mean, all this kind of names.
Okavela vala dagarunati petrol baula endipote, appudu valu, valu, vala dagarunati, a vanteleku, ee perlu badtaranta, Rolls Royce ani, MG ani, rakrakala perlu badtaranta.
Yes, yeah, they had to come back, go back to their original ride, the camels.
Varu mottamadata aarambhamlo, ee dennethe swari jastunaru, aa jintuul deri ke, aa vantele deri kala ellal sastun.
I'm not trying to mock at them because we know that our Lord is visiting those Arabs and especially in Iran and many other countries in the Middle East.
Devudu Iranu, anekamayatuvanti, aayaka majadara pranthalatuvanti, deshalonatuvanti, arabulano, devudu darshistunadu ganuka, neenu valanu, ninninchalanani, valanu, helenajalanani, maat chappatleedi.
What I'm trying to tell is, this big camel, it is easy for a camel to go through the needle, the eye of that needle, it's easy, but for a rich man, it is very difficult.
Penta edinatuvanti eeaka vante, atyanta chinnadinatuvanti, sudhi eeaka, bedjamloena durachu gani, dhanavantudu devuni raajamlo pravesinchitai durlobhamo antunadu.
In this one regards, there is not found any reality in most of the believer's life.
Mana jivitalo, chala saalu, idi mana ku, vastavanga anupinchadu.
They are carried away big time through the riches of this world.
Ee lokasambandamayatuvanti, aishwaryaamuto, dhanamuto, manamu chala saalu, trova tapppi potunamayamo.
So we should give utmost priority to see and keep our eyes on it and then prepare ourself to enter into it.
Manamu aayaka devuni raaja meda, mana eeaka kanulunu nilapali, aa raajamlo pravesinchitani ke manamu, paatupadali.
If I am coming from US to India, me and my wife need at least, at least ten days preparation.
Neenu taravata, annathopadunatuvanti valla, satimanidharu, amerikanunchi, indiakravadani ke, kanisam, padirozala sidhapadu makavasaram.
We have to get many gifts and all these things for our relatives and friends, the same way going back from India to America, we need at least ten plus days, this time we feel, I think we need one month, at least one month preparation.
Akanuchikadigraavadani ke enta sidhapadavasaramo, ikanuchimarala akadu vodani gudda makante sidhapadavasaram, ma bandhulu, sneethulu, vala andariki, yavana teeskanellalume.
And so, if we are going to that great eternal kingdom which cannot be shaken, how much more preparation in our personal life, in our family life and at large, at, in the fellowship life, that preparation must be very obvious.
Alantapudu, nitya raajamlo pravesinchitani ke sidhapadutunatuvanti mana vikthigata jivitalemi, kutumba jivitala iteneemi, sangja jivitala unnaiteeneemi, entaga manamu sidhapadalo, kada?
Others will see if you are traveling somewhere, say, oh, are you going somewhere, they will ask us because they see some preparation, buying, shopping and packing and all those things.
Ah, manamu konisalu, pranamayellemundo, mana veli shopla eva kontu untaam, mana jastunatuvanti pannalubatti, mana chuttuvanavali antunadu, oh, mere ekadu ko pranamavatunaru, ekadigelinaranadu untaru.
Jordan Khan was, when, when in the Holy Convocation, all were singing, jaenge uttam ekdeeshme zarun, that is a song, I think you know.
Jordan Khan uncle. जोडनकान अंकुलु, आका कानोकेशले पुड़ू पाडे पाटा वेल्लेदम, स्रेष्ट देशम निजमो उन्डेदम, प्रभु तोने नित्यमो
So, brother Jordan Zikhan says, ताली बजाते हो, जायेंगे, रहजाव, रहजावंगे
आयन एने वाडु चप्पट्लुकुडु परलोकराज्यानिकु बोताम, आ, लेद चप्पट्लुकुडु, इकड़े गुर्चनु उठ्ताम एने वाडु
So, just because we can sing loudly and passionately and even wholeheartedly, that doesn't matter, that doesn't mean that we will end up going into that eternal kingdom of God.
हाँ, मनम पाडे पाटलाद्वारा, इन्तो उत्साहंगा, इन्तो आश्यतो मनम पाडिनंतो मात्राना मनल्ने देवन राज्यमलो निका पाटल तीस्कुनुपो
Daily basis, hourly basis, there must be found some preparation going on in our lives.
मन जीवितमलो, प्रतिगंता, प्रतिदिनमो, आयका राज्यमकोरकै मनम सिद्धपडुतू उठाली
I'm, I'm not just speaking to you, dear brothers and sisters, I'm also including myself. I need that word from the Lord.
ये नी माट चिप्तुनपुरु, इदी केवलम मीकोरकु मात्तरमेकादु चिप्तुनटुंटे, नाकोरकुड़ा, नेनु गुड़ा, ना प्रभुनु कलिस्कोडानिकी नेनु गुड़ा सिद्धपडाली
Because preaching can become one kind of addiction.
कुन्नी सारलु, यीका बोधिंचिता मने दी, एक वेसनमुगा तैयारगावच्छु
Preaching can become an idol.
कुन्नी सारलु, यीका बोधा, बोधिंचिता मने दी, विग्रहमायपोच्छु
And our priorities can be misplaced.
मन एक्का आदिक्यतलु कुन्नी सारलु तप्पिपोच्छु
Lord is desiring from each and every one of us that there must be found preparation in our life that we are going to this eternal kingdom.
आयका नित्यराज्यमलो निका मनम पोतुनांगनुका, मन अंदरमु गुड़ा आ राज्यमकोरकै सिद्धपड़लानी प्रभु कोरताउनाडु
We have a very good song in USA, maybe some of you know this. We are marching to Zion, beautiful, beautiful Zion, the city of God's, city of King, city of great King.
आयका अमेरिका देशमलो, मनकुड़ चाला मंदिकी पाट देलसु आ पाटा, मनम एक्कु पाटुतुंटम इकड़ु गुड़ा मेम आयका सियोन देशानिकी, मा प्रभुनु कलिस्कोडानिकी मेमो साइनिकुल्लागा, मेम कवातुजेस्तु बैल्देतुनाम एने पाटा
We are marching to Zion, beautiful, beautiful Zion. So, we are marching at the drumbeats of our commander-in-chief, our victorious King.
मन विजयवंतुडे नटुंटे राजयनटुंटे अत्यंत शक्तिवंतमयन टुंटे, साइन्यादिपतयन टुंटे, आयन आ बूर वोदगाने, मन अंदरमो, आयन देगिरी केल्लीपोताम
It is important for the army to march at the drumbeats.
यीका साइनिमलो, यी कवातुजेसे, साइनिकुलकु उन्नल्सन प्रामुख्यमयन लक्ष्मण एंटंटे आयका ड्रम्मुले पुड़ेते मुरोगतायो, अप्पुर वेंटने कवातुजेलालु
But we must remember that we are not an ordinary army, we are the victorious army.
आइत मनम गुर्तिच्चिकोल्सन प्रामुख्यमयन संगत एंटंटे, मनम सामान्यमयन टुंटे साइनिकुलम कादु मनम विजयवंतमयन टुंटे, विजयान्नीपुंदिन टुंटे साइनिकुलम
When our King has defeated the foe and has won the victory, now we have the banner over us is his love, we have the victory banner.
मन प्रवेनटुंटे, मन राजयनटुंटे, एसु कृष्ट प्रभु शित्रवेनटुंटे, सातानु जेंचितुद्वारा, मन अंदरिपैना प्रेमाने आयका जंडानो, आयका पताकानी यग्रवेसनाडु
Another song comes in my heart. येशु के पीछे पीछे, चला जा रहा हूँ मैं क्रू सपना मैं उठाये, चला जा रहा हूँ मैं So these songs are for our spiritual adification and upliftment.
यीका पाटल निन्नु गुड़ा, मन आत्मय अक्षेममकोरकै आत्मयंगा मनल्ने उन्नतस्थानानिकी तीस्कुनुपोडानिके यी पाटलो
The cross before me and the world behind me, no turning back, no turning back.
ना मुंदु सिल्वा उद्दी, ना वेनकल लोकमो नेन एन्नटिकी वेनुतिरगनु, नेन एन्नटिकी वेनुतिरगनु, अनिमनम चिप्तु उठाली
The time has far gone.
चाला समय मायपै इंदी
We may see maybe one more scripture.
मरोका उनकोकलेखनभागन मनम चूड्डानी प्रयत्न जेस्ताम
Let us turn to First Thessalonians.
मोदती तेसलोनीकलु रास्तिना पत्रिका
First Thessalonians, chapter two, verse twelve.
रण्डव अध्यायम, मोदती तेसलोनीकलु रास्तिना पत्रिका, रण्डव अध्यायम, पन्नडो अच्छिनम